If I can have everyone's attention, I'd like to call the August 18th, 2016 meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome, I see that we have scouts, Troop 254, are you all in one troop? Welcome.
257.
257, okay, well, welcome to both of you. And I just want to say that we're glad you're here. We'd love to see kids that are interested in how the school system and the government's run, and if there's anything that we can answer for you after the meeting, or if y'all think of questions later and you'd like to email us, we all have an email address that you can find on our website, and we're so glad you're here. Now, if everyone can rise, Dr. Bearden is going to do the dedication and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. If you'd just join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
A motion by Tom, and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous. And then we have a consent agenda, which I'm sure everyone's gone over. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
A motion by Tom, and a second by Kristen, all in favor, unanimous. And then next, we have, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Board policy, BCBI sets forth the rules for public participation, and copies are available on the back table. Anyone requesting to speak to the board must sign a form indicating that they have read and will follow the requirements of the policy. Tonight, Ms. Anita Tucker has requested to speak to the board. Public participation is designed to allow citizens to speak to us, and other board members do not respond during this part of the agenda unless they have specific questions for the presenter. Ms. Tucker, you may proceed.
Good evening, everyone. And I appreciate you giving me your time, and I come to you as a concerned parent, as well as a taxpayer. I appreciate you giving me this time this evening, and I would like to discuss Amendment One, which is going to be on the ballot this November. It is a constitutional amendment that will remove the current checks and balances of school tax funds and local control. Currently, as per the Georgia constitution, the state collects and distributes school tax dollars using a complicated formula that provides extra funding to underserved communities. Local communities control how their schools are managed through the elected local board of education. Amendment One reads, "It provides greater flexibility and state accountability to fix failing schools through increasing community involvement." It states, "Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended to allow the state to intervene in chronically failing schools in order to improve student performance?" This constitutional amendment creates what is called an Opportunity School District that is statewide. It is controlled by the state and run by a superintendent who is appointed by the governor. The school district could have individual schools from all over the state, which have been selected to be in the Opportunity School District, or an OSD, because they have received an F grade for three years. What constitutes an F can and will be determined by the governor and his appointed superintendent. There is nothing in the legislation that addresses any changes in instruction meant to help children and families that are dealing with struggling schools. The enabling legislation for Amendment One is Senate Bill 133. It details how the OSD will operate if this constitutional amendment is approved by the voters. The details can be changed at any time by the state legislature with a simple majority vote. Criteria for being selected as a failing school is not in this legislation. What does this mean to Georgia and public education? It allows the state to take over any school that they determine to be failing. Currently, the plan is to use a score below 60 on the CCRPI. Note that that can change at any time. The governor appoints a superintendent of the OSD. The superintendent has nothing to do with the State Department of Education or your elected school superintendent of Georgia. The state may do one of three things with the schools they take over without parent or teacher votes, or input from the local board. They can close the school and disperse the children and staff around the county. They can take over the school as a state charter school and have dual governance by the state and the local board. Thirdly, they can take over the school as a state charter school and hire a for-profit management company to run it. Local board has no role except to pay for it. This is what has happened in most states and districts that have been approved state takeover plans. The Georgia school takeover plan mirrors the changes that have failed in Louisiana, Michigan, and Tennessee. This would be the first time that state charter schools would be allowed to use local funds. Any school that falls under OSD control will remain a state charter school forever. This means that the state gets to use the local money in school building forever. There is nothing in the legislation which talks about improvements in education or any extra resources for these schools. So it is business as usual in our schools, except the state and the for-profit management companies get to run them. Additionally, schools that score low on standardized tests that are not taken over by the OSD get no extra help. Currently, the Office of School Improvement and School Turnaround at the Georgia Department of Education already provides the lowest performing schools in Georgia with extra funding and support. Instead of creating more bureaucratic duplication, underserved communities need support to determine how to use this extra funding to create improved outcomes. This constitutional amendment lacks transparency and does not address why students in schools are struggling. There is no evidence that this constitutional amendment will improve student success. This constitutional amendment provides no safeguards to protect children with disabilities or any child that needs extra assistance in school. It is a heroic and long-appreciated demonstration of trust and access of the entire local community of parents, educators, and other stakeholders to locally elected school boards, whose purpose and value. Our children's education should not be treated as a profit center where the contract goes to the lowest bidder, whose sole purpose is to make a profit. In August of 2016, the Big County Board of Education issued this resolution. Board members approved the resolution opposing the Opportunity School District, which is on the ballot in November, and if approved, would allow the state to take over local-operated failing schools. Other boards of education in the state, such as those in Chatham and Newton Counties, have voted to pass a similar resolution. To read the resolution, and they provide a link to the Senate Bill 133 for their voters, for their parents. I respectfully request that the Forsyth County Board of Education also issue this resolution, and to add a link to the meeting minutes to Senate Bill 133, so that voters can be educated about Amendment One in November. And thank you for taking it.
I just want to say thank you. That was a detailed and concise analysis of it, and we're having on our agenda, on our work session, and we will take all of your comments into consideration, but thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to presentation and discussion items. And first is the financial report with Rick Gunn. Oh, he's way in the back, I couldn't see where he was. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sat in the back this time.
You did, threw me off.
Tonight, I bring you the financial statements for July of 2016. Our beginning cash balance was $51.5 million. Receipts for the month were $19.3 million, dispersments $30.04 million, and leaving us a cash balance of $40,400,000. We are right at about $14 million ahead of where we were at this time last year. The revenues for the month, we haven't had a lot of collection other than QBE. Most of our tax money for the month was accrued into the month of June, so there's very little showing for that. Expenditures for the month are right in line with where we should be, being just one month into the year. Check register for the month, we had 313 checks totaling $18,350,000. Debt service analysis for the month, you can see the cash balance for the debt services account is $25,000. We've made all of the payments that were due at the first part of the year. Splosted accounts, you can see a transfer of $3,268,000, that was going over to the debt service to make a bond payment. Leaving us a total balance for debt of $36,866,000. Capital project investment analysis, the first column you see there, Fund 306 Alliance Academy Bonds, that are the proceeds of $30,208,000 from the bond sale that we had in July. It's already earned $1,284,000. You can see that the transfers out of the Fund 307 next to that, that is 2014 and 2016 bond, leaving us $141,514,000 in investments. The splosted activity for the month, we collected $3,136,000. Previous month was $3,180,000, for an increase of about $118,000. So far to date, we've collected $132,000, $132,000, excuse me. Are there any questions?
Any questions, but I think it's good to note that this time of the year, when our funds are so low, is the reason that we have to have so much in reserves.
Yes, ma'am.
Because sometimes we take that for granted, but it gets very slim this time of the year.
Right, our fund balance at June 30th actually carries us through October, when we start receiving tax money. I believe the tax bills are actually going out tomorrow. So we have to operate much like a savings account. We take in about $15,000 to $19,000 a month, and we disperse a little over $30,000 a month.
Right.
So that's basically our fund balance, is every month is taking, you know, a $10 to $12 million hit until we start getting the tax money in October.
Got to make payroll.
So that's why, end payroll, yes. Any questions, though?
Pay your taxes early, right?
Yes, pay your taxes early, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tom, leading with a construction update.
Unfortunately, for each of our construction projects that were required to complete this past August 1st in time for school opening, we've successfully done that, so, you know, stating the obvious, that's critical to students, but also it's critical to our development program as we flow into Phase Two. So as I take you through that, starting with our high schools, now that the North High School cafeteria and other new building elements are done, the vacated space is now being repurposed, renovated, such that the new band choral classroom renovations are ongoing at North. And while we have really a contractually obligated completion date of next August of '17, we're well on our way to turning those over at Christmas break. And really, it's a similar dynamic at Central, where those vacated repurposed areas, our STEM labs there, we'll be turning those over during winter break. And at South, the additional classrooms, additional culinary expansion to that program is well underway, and will be turned over during Christmas break. Lambert's, simpler in nature, the classrooms are complete, the band is complete, and because the repurposed renovation areas were simpler in scope and magnitude, we were able to achieve those over the summer. So Lambert being substantially complete, you know, and in each of those cases, we still have punch list, some warranty issues, there's a couple rooms where we're fine tuning, you know, HVAC, there'll be a dead plant from landscaping, that we put it back during the proper growing season, so I do want to couch my word and not create a unrealistic expectation. We still have miscellaneous items, sticky hardware, lock set, this kind of thing, but, you know, unfortunately, looking in total of the program, we're fortunate that those are the miscellaneous type items we're dealing with at this point in the program. West Forsyth High School, we successfully turned over the counseling area over the summer, so now the band and choral additions to the bump outs of the footprint of the building, foundations are in progress and well underway. Denmark High School, Fort Worth is progressing extremely well, we've got photos of that. Site work and foundations are in progress, and, you know, from a development perspective, when we have a large site like that at 110 acres that we're developing, getting out of the ground is always the riskiest point, being unsuitable soils, contaminated soils, de-watering. We really haven't run into any of that, and when you do on a 110 acre site, that can be pink, but fortunately, we're not doing that, so, and you'll see a photo quickly of that. For Alliance Academy, the design team's doing a great job accelerating that program. The permit and final drawings are being submitted to the Department of Education tomorrow. In general, that's a two-week review time, which then allows us to get their approval the 1st of September, and that fits well to the procurement sequence of what we need to do on the construction side with pre-qualified general contractors, with the goal of bringing the recommendation to the board October 20th, which will allow us to get started. So just a couple photos, North, that's obviously an aerial view of that, you know, I think one of the takeaways really of all the high schools, when you walk through at the street level, it's one continuous campus, you don't even realize, all these additions and the puzzles that we had came together, so the designers did a good job with that. You know, you see it a little disjointed here, the new is obviously the white roof, the white roof was done for energy efficiency, but, you know, that's not a typical view of what people get, so they don't see the gray roof, white roof. You walk through, it solved not only the security issue, but traffic flow.
It does, it makes sense when you look at it this way.
As if it's one campus, filling that in.
It was so spread out before, it just makes more sense that it's solid, yeah.
So now you see Central being landscaped, that makes a nice difference, that's a great aerial view of tying East and West Campus together there. Lambert High School band addition, now you see Lambert landscaped as well. The green grass around the buildings always makes the building look a little nicer, so. So moving on to Denmark, I think a picture's always worth a thousand words, and it's even hard for me to visualize, so we superimpose the digital image of what the building footprint will be. In the blue is the building, the gymnasium on the upper left-hand corner, classrooms on the lower right-hand corner, administration in the middle front. The playing fields will be in the upper left. You start to see, too, it works well, parking lots surround the building, and we've got a great case here where we did have access from three streets, that being kitchens, Molinax, and Fowler, so we're able to separate student parking, teacher parking, and then the bus parking coming in.
I'm sure that'll be nice with traffic, to have that many outlets, that'd be great.
That works well for traffic flow. So it's still a little difficult to see, but where you see the gray, large elements, those are the trailer compounds of the general contractors and subcontractors, where you see the little gray dots, that's, those are the concrete foundations. But really, already at this point ahead of schedule, the site work contractor, concrete contractor, during these great summer months, you know, it's seven o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night, working six days a week to get a jump on the, on the summer, which bodes well to, I was thinking, well, we've got to get ahead for, before winter comes. So that's off to a great start, not only schedule-wise, but again, from the dollar risk of getting out of the ground and not spending dollars on rock, or some of the other elements I mentioned, with bad soils, so that's going extremely well. Any questions on high schools before I move to the middle schools? Okay, so on the middle schools, we currently have five middle schools under renovations and additions, that being Liberty, North, Otwell, Piney Grove, and Vickery. So for each of those, we needed to have some renovation completed for the opening of the school. We've successfully done that. For the most part, these, I'll call them bump outs, whether it's team rooms, or cafeteria, or band additions, we're looking to have all of those done before, during winter break turnover. So not only does that obviously work for construction and beat the winter weather, but it works well for the flow of the school, being able to then plan and be able to utilize that space come January, when the students return after break. Unfortunately, South and Riverwatch, not only the classroom additions were complete, but also the additional bump outs of the miscellaneous programs.
I was at South Middle last night in the band room, and the band instructor was so excited that, the kids were in there, they were all set up, and the parents, they were doing their curriculum night, and he was just so excited that they don't have to move to the cafeteria anymore, you know, it's such a shift, it's such an effort, and he just, the bounce in their staff, they were so excited, it was really great to see, so.
And then DeSana successfully opened, Brandywine successfully opened, and then there's just a couple photos of the final landscaping images of Brandywine. Are there any questions, concerns on the program?
It's exciting, it really is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Human Resources update with Dr. Cindy Salum.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, we have people to fill those buildings, kids and adults. Well, I started with one of your new schools, obviously you've got two, we had to fill them with adults and teachers and staff, and so that has certainly been a job for us. We've been busy in human resources. We wanted to tell you that we absolutely support the learner profile. Not only do we want our students to end with those, with these kind of characteristics, we're also looking for staff with these characteristics. We want them, our staff to pursue continuous learning. We absolutely need strong personal qualities. We want them to use their creative thinking and critical thinking in our lesson plans in engaging our students. We want them to engage and contribute to our system, and we certainly want them to interact effectively. So this is our guide, just as it is our teacher's guide. Our new staff, we have had 575 new hires this year, 415 of them are certified, newly funded positions are 144, and of course, that's two new schools and growth. First-year teachers this year, a little less than we had last year, only 50, last year we had 111. New educator facts, 25 are former teachers that we've enticed back to us. Also, we've sort of been growing our own in a different way, we have, we tap our paraprofessionals, and 39 of them have been appointed to teachers, and two paraprofessionals have been appointed to counselors, and I was thinking I had another one, two paraprofess counselors, and then 34 substitutes, so we've got a good choice from substitute teachers who like us and they want to be with us all the time. We have enticed 94 people from Fulton and Gwinnett, we have enticed 66 from other districts around the state, and then 48 are from other states. Our new staff to the system this year, this is where they are around the system, 144 of them are in elementary school. In the middle and high, there are 19 science teachers, 33 language arts, 27 math, 20 social studies, 10 CTAE, and 11 health and PE, as well as two new assistant principals, special ed, 63, and that's always a thing we're seeking, and absolutely, we're not quite through with that. Speech and language is another one of those fields that we search out and define 12 in one year, it's marvelous. Special ed facilitators, there are two of those, world language, eight, three music teachers, five art, 15 counselors, that's a lot, and it was, that's also sometimes a challenge to find. A psychologist and two hearing impaired, and those two are very rare. We have five first-year principals this year, so we've got some babies out there, and we also have 11 first-year assistant principals. Our teacher retention rate is 94.3% this year, and as you see, from 2012 to 2016, we've hovered in that range of 94 to 95%, and obviously, we want that to increase even more. People are moving around a little bit more this year. Staffing, certified staff, as you see, we're growing for the last couple or three years, 3,100, almost 3,100 teachers certified, classified, 1,700. Active, so total active, not counting substitutes, is almost 5,000 teachers. When you add the substitutes, 1,100 of those, and I will tell you that from '16 to '17, you'll see we dropped about 400, and that is because we had people who had not subbed for us in a couple of years, so we contacted them, and if they didn't want to continue, then we took them off our rolls. So that's why you see a dip there. So total active employees, if you count our substitutes, is a little over 6,000 employees. Substitute teachers, we have 889, and 313 of those are certified, and highly qualified subs are 224. We have to have highly qualified for teachers who are out, for example, on maternity leave, family medical leave, that kind of thing, who are longer than 10 days, so we need those desperately. So we end up with our new school, Brandywine, and any questions that you might have of me?
You know you've been busy.
We have been, we've got some great staff.
And next, we have Mike Evans with the enrollment update.
There. Well, as the saying goes...
What have you been doing these last few months?
If you want, they will come, they, we have, in our case, it's a matter of, we have to keep building because they keep coming. So just want to give you, and I'll do a little bit, excuse me, perspective of last year, and then where we currently are with this current school year. This one shows, based on the March FTE numbers of this past year, currently Forsyth County is in the seventh largest in the state at 44,720. Now, if I scroll back over, it shows you how we've moved over the years, this goes back 20 years, back, we were 30th back in 1995, so we have definitely been progressing along the way, and still also showing the highest percentage growth at 4.7%. Let me go ahead and jump in. So, take a look, so this is the percentage change from the March FTE numbers, looking back at March 16, or 2016, to the previous month, and the Forsyth County had 4.7% growth, so when you're looking at the largest percent across the state of Georgia, Forsyth was the sixth largest for the percentage growth between those two months, or the year of those months, but definitely, when you look at the size of Forsyth, the highest percent of the large districts. Sure, there's previously also last year, the trend line still stays the same, we're still looking at around the 2018, 19 school year, should be projected around 50,000 at that point, too. But very consistent enrollment growth. This one shows the, last year, the growth from October during the school year to March, so that span of several months during the year. Last year, we actually saw the highest growth mid-year that we had seen in a while, and that was almost 1% growth, that was about 400 students during the year, had been averaging around 200 students, so last year, we did see a mixture of new folks into the county, and possibly fewer students that may have been leaving the county throughout, too. Okay, so this year, these numbers as of August 12th of this past year, enrollment at the time was 45,684, right now, we're about 45,790, so we've gone up about 100 since then, and then a comparison of where we were for the last year. Last year, this time, it was an increase from the previous year at that point, by 1,400 students, and this year, we're at 1,570, which is an increase from last year. New folks to Forsyth County, that's from kindergarten through 12th grade, 5,536, that also includes, at the time, we still had several upcoming appointments that we had scheduled, as well as incomplete registrations for the families that can quite have everything they needed, so they would be enrolled shortly. Just a graph of the numbers that we looked... Just a graph of the numbers that we looked at. So new enrollies this year, trend line, obviously, once the economy picked up, we're on the upswing. Tipped up off a little bit from last year, but still obviously in that positive growth. Breakdown of those new families that were new to Forsyth and new students to Forsyth County, the percentages actually were identical to last year, down to the percent. Again, those that entered from homeschool, two percent, fifty-one percent, never attended school before, those are the kindergartners. Percentages coming in from another state or country. This is a breakdown of all the new enrollies, that fifty-five hundred that we looked at, percentage of where they went, what schools did they land in. So I put the comparison from 2015 to also 2016. And a couple of things just to point out when I was going through looking at, some things that stood out was that those that showed an increase in the percentage from fifteen to sixteen, that they actually kind of took a higher percentage. There are four schools that were there, Cole Mountain, Matt, Sonny, and Silver City. So those actually in the northern. Now there was redistricting with opening new school also, but across the board, those were the schools that saw the higher percentage of those that were coming in. So it could be a sign also that, you know, growth is starting to show up in other areas too. When I look at the middle school, similar to the middle school, those schools that showed an increase in the percentage, Liberty, North Middle, Otwell, and Vicari Creek also had a one-tenth of a percent also increase. And then the high schools, there was no redistricting with high schools. Central saw a positive increase. North saw a positive increase, and the rest also a positive increase. And current enrollment for the academies also, this was as of this past week, I know it's increased a little bit also. So Gateway's at thirty-one, we like to keep a lower number there. And the academies also around the two fifty mark. I think Forsyth Academy's around two sixty today also. Any questions for me?
Thanks for all that data. It just, it helps put in perspective what you all have been doing and where we're heading, which is up.
Right. Definitely up. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, action items, we just have our FY seventeen local board governance training, and I think we all looked at that and everybody signed up for their class. We have to have nine hours. We'll get six for what we signed up for, and then we'll do the whole board training at our retreat. So does anybody have any questions or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Ann and a second by Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, points of information, Dr. Bearden?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Then we have executive session for personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. I mean, yeah, Nancy. All in favor?
Let's meet.
Unanimous?